The Planning Board Secretary has prepared a schedule of the meetings of the Planning Board of the Borough of Kenilworth for the year 2019 and has posted a true copy of this schedule on the bulletin board located at the front entrance of Borough Hall and has mailed true copies of this schedule to the local source, the stall ledger, and is maintaining a copy of this schedule in Borough Hall. Accordingly, the notice requirements of this open public meeting act have been satisfied in regards to this meeting. Can we rise to the point of allegiance?
I would like to be just as silent as the United States of America and this will be reported for which it stands. We want to make an offer of God into this world with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Borough Hall, please.
Mr. Serna?
Here.
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 Okay, um, we have a motion to approve the February 14th amendments.
Motion.
Okay, we've got a couple of them. We have a motion by Mr. Pantina and seconded by Mr. Capari. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Uh, the next is, I need a motion for the communication, wait a second. Communication.
That's a communication, sorry.
Yeah, probably a second. Okay, um, the communications, you want to talk about that and you won't make the motion, I'm sorry.
February 26th from Seta Savian requesting a postponement of zoning appeal for front yard fence.
Okay, motion to postpone. The postponement letter, right, we have to have him make a motion for that.
But can I ask, did she notice for tonight or no?
No.
There's no notice, so we can just postpone it to the next meeting if the board so chooses and you have to notify her to tell her to notice for that meeting.
For the next.
Yeah.
There's no notice.
Oh, for this, okay, okay, then we can just, then we can just.
So we need to make a motion to postpone it to the next meeting.
Well, but wait, so, so to me, I mean, to me, this, this area, the agenda is specific to communications and just the reading of communications of which we say we received a letter, right? I mean, are we supposed to be making a motion to, isn't that?
You've got to take some action on it.
No, I get that, but is that under old business, new business, or, I mean, that's what I don't get this, is like, again, we're reading communications.
I feel like that's the practice.
Yeah, that's a good point.
It probably should have been, um, new business since it's not, we haven't seen that. It's not always, it's, it's new, so, um, from a form standpoint, it's probably, you know, new, new business, zoning appeal, Seta Savian, uh, postponement request, something like that.
Okay, to keep it in order, we already have read the communications and we'll put that back on in the new business.
And I'll make a motion to accept the communications as written.
Okay, motion made by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Grimaldi, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, the next is a motion, uh, to approve the application for the site plan variance of Lutonics USA LLC.
Some.
Seconded by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Grimaldi, all in favor?
Aye.
I can roll.
Oh, Borough Hall, sorry.
Uh, Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Grimaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Pantina?
Yes.
Mr. Mazzio?
Mr. Beller?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
And Kathy, those are the people that were here that could vote, correct? Okay. Next is old business, application 369, site plan ADHP, we need a, like, to have a motion to, and I believe we are postponing this to the next meeting, is that correct?
Yes, without further notice.
Without further notice.
The issue of the 11th of April, tape cert.
Is it 11th or 12th? I don't know why April 12th is popping into my head.
April 11th.
Okay, April 11th, motion made by Mr.?
Some.
David, seconded by, does anybody else on the side?
Yes.
Okay. Seconded by Mr. Capari, Borough Hall, please.
Mr. Serna?
Yes.
Mr. Jockey?
Yes.
Mr. Grimaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Pantina?
Yes.
Mr. Vada?
Yes.
Mr. Beller?
Yes.
Mr. Parry?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, next, we're gonna go, we're gonna backtrack what we talked about before, under new business, we'd like to have a motion requesting the postponement of the zoning appeal for front yard fence, uh, set forth by, what's that name, Seta Savian?
Set.
Okay.
Until the April?
Until the April 11th, maybe.
11th, sorry.
We'll do it right there. Moved by Mr. David, I'm, I'm sorry.
Yep, I will make a motion.
Moved by Mr. David?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Grimaldi, Borough Hall, please.
Mr. Serna?
Yes.
Mr. Jockey?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Pantina?
Yes.
Mr. Vada?
Yes.
Mr. Beller?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, next, we have new business, zoning appeal 2-2, Office Warehouse, Car Vitale. Um, I'm sorry, where are we going with this at this point? We have a, a motion to, um...
Well, we need to hear the appeal.
All right, we need to hear the appeals, because Mr. Vitale is here, right?
Yeah, um, I, I don't know how this board has done it in the past, they normally don't come up a lot, an appeal from the zoning officer under section 70A of the land use law. In my experience, um, the way, I mean, there's a couple of ways you can proceed. Normally, um, I, I would swear in the zoning officer, since it's Mr. Herbert's letter that, that puts us here, and then swear in Mr. Vitale, and, is it Vitale or Vitally? Vitale. Vitale. And then, we would ask Mr. Herbert to just explain his letter, which we have, and why he said no, ask him whatever questions we want, and Mr. Vitale can ask him whatever questions, then we get Mr. Vitale up to explain why he thinks Mr. Herbert's not correct and go through the same procedure, and we, and the issue is not whether to grant a site plan, not grant a site plan, the issue is whether, um, under the circumstances, do we, um, I understand here that, that a permit was denied because of the fact that Mr. Herbert thinks a minor site plan is required, Mr. Vitale has the opposite opinion, so the issue is whether he proceeds without a minor site plan, or does he need a minor site plan, and that's as far as we go. Uh, if he needs one, he has to come back, if he doesn't, uh, God bless him, and he just goes ahead. So, that's, that's the way I would suggest, if Kevin has a different, Kevin, do you have any other words? If that's the way it normally works, uh, we need to know why we're here first, and then, and then go from there.
Okay, I think what we'll do, we're just interpreting whether Bob is correct.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay.
And Bob, nothing, nothing personal here for Mr. Herbert, it's just, we have the ordinance, and is, is Bob's interpretation correct, or is Mr. Vitale's, Vitale's interpretation correct? And that's the issue.
Okay, given the fact that our zoning officer, um, Robert Herbert, was issued the denial letter, I guess we're gonna hear from Mr. Herbert first, so he can tell us, um, what basis he has for this denial. Mr. Herbert?
And, uh, while, I can swear in, um, Kevin O'Brien, our planner, and Chris Guado, our engineer, just in case they need to comment, gentlemen, with regard to this appeal, do you swear that any comments you may make show me the truth?
I do.
Okay, and, Mr. Herbert, if you could raise your right, oh, you have, you have the podium, okay. You can announce for the presidential, no, okay. Um, with regard to this application, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give show me the truth? And state your name, please.
Robert Herbert.
Mr. Herbert, you are the zoning officer here in the Borough of Kenilworth, right?
That is correct.
Thank you, it's all yours.
Okay, Mr. Herbert, give us a little background, what's going on?
Well, first thing, I want to apologize, I'm really not prepared tonight, because until late last night, I wasn't aware of this appeal. Uh, previous, previous one, that's gonna be coming up in April, I, I'm aware, but I am familiar with the case, so, uh, Mr. Vitale came in, had a potential client, and, uh, I explained to him what he wanted to do, was a permitted use, but under our minor site plan, uh, ordinance, Article 12, uh, 120-12.2, under definitions, it gives a list of things that would trigger a minor site plan, and in Article 86, it says in our codebook, a change from one conforming use to another conforming use, or one office use to another office use, for which there is no other variance required. And, uh, he would make the parking requirements, so he doesn't need a variance, uh, but the discrepancy is a change of use, uh, what I know of the previous tenant, it was a warehouse facility, uh, and, and the tenant done some, uh, tax type of, uh, what do they call it, when you file your taxes?
Tax preparation.
Tax preparation during tax season. Uh, every time I went by the building, and the doors were open, from the front to back, all I saw was boxes. I'd never seen any office, but they didn't walk through it, but it was just wall-to-wall boxes, so I classify that as a warehouse use. And then, this new applicant wants to use it for an office to dispatch his, uh, limousine drivers, he assures me they're not gonna be coming to that location, they're gonna be working from their homes, but this tenant wants to use the office as a dispatch center. Uh, so it's a change, change of use, and, uh, for Article 6, uh, I feel that he needs a probably for a minor site plan.
Bob, can I just understand something? You first said that you saw a gentleman in there, whoever it was, preparing taxes, like, almost like an H&R Block, it went around April or whatever, and he was preparing taxes, and the boxes primarily, by what you're telling me, could be represented as the files of his clients of what he's, the preparation of the taxes, let's say, but when you go to a, uh, an account, you go to the taxes, and he's gonna do your...
Okay, uh, I didn't make myself clear, that's incorrect.
Okay.
The tax preparation was like a little cost business from the existing tenant. The existing tenant before was a warehouse and distribution for graduation gowns and hats and things like that, that was the primary business there. And then, during tax season, I guess, to, uh, a little extra that he did in his business, he did tax, small tax preparation.
The same owner?
Same guy? Same tenant.
Same tenant?
Right. Mr. Vitale is the owner.
Okay, all right, I meant the same owner of that business?
Yes.
Okay, so, by what you're telling me, as the guy who was doing the gowns and the, and the things, whatever he was doing, the distribution, but he also had to or must have maintained an office in order to do that business of that warehousing? Am I correct or incorrect?
Uh, possibly, but like I stated, when you looked in the front door, uh, I never seen any office, so all I saw was boxes from floor to ceiling, right to left, wall-to-wall.
So basically, you're assuming that that's what it was?
It was all warehouse, yes.
Okay. Anybody else have a question?
Yeah. Um, Bob, is the applicant proposing any modifications to the exterior, the property, the parking, the exterior of the building, anything like that, or is it just internal modification?
No modifications at all, I understand just go into the empty space.
Because I'm looking at that, the minor site plan section of our ordinance, and it has six whatevers.
Six.
Couple of them are not a model of clarity, but they all seem to relate to some change in the, in, physical change in the building, the exterior, the site itself, and six talks about changing from one conforming to another conforming, and it, and there's, and there's no variances required. Um, do you think that presumes that someone's going to do some exterior changing, but no variances are required? Because if there's no site work, I, I know, I know this is what the ordinance says, but it just even, doesn't seem to make, make sense.
I totally agree with you, uh, for attorney, I don't know why it's in this section, but, uh, as the zoning officer, I have to go by what ordinance is in the, in the codebook until it's changed, you know, so that's, that's why I made my determination. I do have to agree with you, usually a site plan is, uh, alterations to the side of the building or the site or anything like that, that I agree with.
Okay.
And then, if it, if it does need a variance, it triggers it to a major site plan.
Right.
You know, but for some reason, this language is in number six, so until somebody tells me my interpretation is incorrect, or this ordinance has changed, or actually located in the ordinance book, I have to go by what's in the law.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, reading the applicant's letter, he says, "For the first 45 years, the entire bottom floor were offices. The past three and a half years, this space was office slash warehouse. Since February, the space is vacant. The first floor has always legally been set up front-back with separate utilities, but only had one tenant renting the entire first floor since the building was built in 1962. Two tenants in 56 years. I would like to make the front half of the building my office, the back half will remain office slash warehouse." So, I mean, something seems inconsistent of what I'm hearing now, based on what the applicant has written in this letter, because I didn't hear that there's gonna be two tenants.
Well, Mr. Vitale, comment on that. Okay. Um, does anyone on the board have anything else for Mr. Herbert? Mr. Grimaldi?
I'm not sure if it's for Mr. Herbert or our professionals.
Well, we're gonna go to the professionals next.
Um, we're talking about what Bob assumed it was at. Certainly, it would, it would have filed as one of his office or warehouse?
Well...
Because you look at the indifference in parking requirements?
So, yeah, of course it would be, but the thing is, is that there's been something going on there for a number of years, and, um, I, I, and I'm not gonna make a determination, but it looks like to me is that you have some type of business working out of that structure, you're going to have an office space to either do your inventory, your payroll, or whatever the case may be, what's going on. So, there seems to me, seems to be...
That's a small space.
Whatever, right, whatever it is, there seems to be a combination of office environment and a warehouse. I don't deny either, but I'd, I'd like to know what your thoughts are.
Yeah, so then, we, couple months back, we just speak about another ordinance that if it was under 1200 square feet, it was unapproved to unapproved, we wouldn't have to be here for things like this?
Yes.
With this form?
On the board.
On the board.
Yes, okay.
Sir, has Bob had that, Bob, you're in comments as to, that's an interesting issue, I know you said it's permitted, and, and it wants to state the permitted use, do you see any difference in the parking requirements from, well, we're gonna find out exactly, what was and what isn't.
When I met with Mr. Vitale and his potential new tenant, like, his statement in his zoning application, that he wanted his office for a limousine business, and it would only be him and his car, and would be no other cars in his limousine business coming to that location, his drivers work in the house, so I felt there definitely wasn't any parking impact there.
Okay.
And, uh, regarding Mr. Grimaldi's, uh, question about that change of ordinance about, uh, one use to another, but it was 1200 square feet, and it was only in the Borough District, it's not through the whole Borough. Okay?
Mr. Vada, you have something?
No, I'm just, I'm just thinking.
Okay.
Not yet, it's going?
Yeah, so?
A question, I want to make sure.
Is it the board or Mr. Herbert?
Uh, Mr. Herbert. Um, what, what are the ordinance, are you citing and turning it down?
Uh, 120-12.2, under definitions of a minor site plan, Article A, Section 6.
Nothing's happening.
Okay, it's too, that is different from the other zoning permit that I...
Does it say 225 on there?
It does, it does, and it's different though.
Yes, and I will, if I may, I'd like to explain, explain. I recently, in March of 2019, was just informed, in March of 2018, to change the ordinance code from 225 chapter to 120, and I just found this out two weeks ago.
A year later.
Yeah, but we worked that out now.
Well, that's cool.
And now, I give everything 125, but...
Did you say the socks are here?
Yeah, I will say, hey, I don't know what happened, now, oh, I'm a zoning officer, and I'm always the last one to know anything, especially when it contains a zone. But, uh, 120, 120, if you look up that 225 that I cited, it will, the same language will be there, okay?
So, 225 versus 120 is a typo?
No, it's not a typo, I thought you meant 225, but if we, what I did cite on the zoning application, if you look up that ordinance under the 225 and refer to 12012.2, the language is identical to what I stated, okay?
And just a point of information, all the ordinance is changed in September of 2018, when they were all renumbered, recodified, and the clerk informed. I think it's everybody but Mr. Herbert.
Right.
And David.
It happens, all units make honest mistakes, and I really firmly believe it was just an honest mistake, maybe somebody was told to relay the message and it didn't get to me, uh, so that is a mistake on my part, citing 225, and I apologize.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Herbert?
Um, I was actually out at the site, to go see the overall, uh, state of the...
Any observations on what happened?
No, I, I come into, you know, there wasn't anything, like, the pavement, the curving, everything was satisfactory and correct.
Okay, anybody from the board want to ask another question for Mr. Herbert? If not, we'll call Mr. Vitale.
I'm sorry?
No, unless Mr. Vitale wants to answer, Mr. Herbert, we can...
Well, we have to get him up here first.
Yeah, we'll get him.
Thank you, Mr. Herbert.
Okay.
We may call you back.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Vitale, come on up and state your name, address, for the record.
Car Vitale, 441 15th Street, Kenilworth.
Could you raise your right hand, please, with regard to this applicant, no, appeal? Do you swear that your comments show you the truth to help you God?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, the, Bob, definitely, when he saw the doors open, you could see boxes there, and then, there's a side entrance, and that's where it goes into his office, so I had asked my tenant, who's Trim Styles, and I had asked him if, would it be applied before, when he, when he moved in, he said office warehouse. So, he decided, my sister doesn't live around here, and she lives off of the Ring, so next door was vacant, so he had asked, could he talk to her to rent her warehouse downstairs? So, he made that his main warehouse, he has a partial warehouse in the back, which I drew on the forms that you have, I have how it's set up now, this easy object in the back, and that's where his office is there, and then, um, so, there really are no changes that would be made whatsoever. Uh, the oldest people that he has working for him are the same people that he had when he was on my side, even though his office is in the back, he works with one girl next door, and then the other girl is in the office in the back where I am. Now, um, I wanted to clear it up, you know, originally, it was a limousine, I don't know if he's still gonna take it, because, you know, I couldn't put him through all this, so I did it, and I'm gonna take it as my office, with the hope that in the future, I can rent it, I'm gonna rent it as an office. So, I'm being very clear with you, you know, I'm not trying to hide anything, you know, that was my intention, because I have tenants upstairs, and I don't want to have anything that's noisy, or the hours are bad, and with Trim Styles, I had looked a long time, I waited, till I found a tenant that wasn't, you know, wouldn't interfere with the privacy upstairs, so that's why I did that. But, uh, let's see, uh, so really, I don't have a lot to say, except, you know, it's really, you know, with the office warehouse before, whether he put his office in the front or the back, you know, and I know he did see that, which was legit, you know, he did see, you know, if you look to the coffee shop, Mike's over there, you can see the doors were open, you could see he had stored boxes there, but the whole bottom has been rented for the whole time, my father built the building, and, uh, you know, the only two tenants I have are these two tenants, never had any other tenants.
So, to understand your testimony, you've always had office space in that building in conjunction with warehouse space?
Uh, no, no, for the 45 plus years, it was all office, all office office.
Okay.
It was other than the main Ventronics Incorporated, that was his main office right there.
Okay.
So, it's only because, you know, I had, you know, by the time I painted it, he was there 45 years, he didn't do a whole lot, so, you know, I painted it, I put new flooring and everything, so it took me a while to do that, I did it all myself, so, um, after that was done, you know, I looked carefully to get a good tenant, you know, so that's why, you know, when one came along, that happened to be Trim Styles, I felt very comfortable with him, so that's why I rented it. But, and then, two months after that was when this ordinance came out, a month or two after, about three and a half years ago, is when they came up with that ordinance of the change of use, so I didn't know that until when I applied for that to be an office, when he decided, you know, he was only gonna rent the back half. But it is legitimately set up, front half, back half, you know, everything is separate.
How long have you owned the building again, and what was stated, 16?
My father built it since 1962. Um, the estate was, was settled in 2003, but, uh, you know, my father passed away in 1991, just a...
So, it's been in the family since 16?
Been in the family the whole time.
Okay.
So, I had a question, Mr. Vitale, are there any new partitions, or anything going on on the interiors, so the front, the back office are already...
It's always the same, it's been from day one.
Thank you.
Question, sir, is the Loma Service not going in there?
Uh, I haven't talked to him, I had put a note into him, if he was still interested, and said, "I'll call me tomorrow," so I'm not sure, and if they go in there, and he's not, no, no cars would be out of the process, and I felt comfortable with him, too.
That's my concern.
But, um, there will be no limousines there, I, you know, we only, we've never had more than morning or night, seven cars in the park, you know, and I go by there every day in the morning, and I go by at night, model the best. My sisters on both sides of me have the buildings, and they live far away, so I take care of it.
Anyone else have any questions?
I've got a question, um, this is initially warehouse and office, right, slash office percentage warehouse percentage, so basically, what you're saying is, the office user had already existed in that, in the location?
Yeah, and that's what I...
It's just a percentage, less warehouse, more office?
Yes.
A little, something like that, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's what I had mentioned to Bob, but, you know, I understand his point, that you gotta go by the written rules.
Yeah, sometimes just to...
If it had to go further, someone else had made...
Helps protect against abuse, but, yeah, I think you're in that case, thanks.
Anyone else? Um, we also have, I'm sorry?
Whatever you're doing.
I was gonna tell, uh, explain to Mr. Vitale, you also have an opportunity to ask Mr. Herbert any question or anything, so I don't want you to think it's just...
No, no, I feel comfortable, he's been more than, he's been fair to me, you know, and I've asked him questions, and checked the things for me, and he did, you know, everybody will remember for a while, so...
Very good, Bob. Okay, Kevin?
Mr. Vitale, according to your sketch here, the building appears to have 1,568 square feet, is that correct?
Yes.
That's the entirety of the building?
Yes.
And the entirety of the building also has eight, I remember, 13 blocks total, on the office, there's parking spaces, so when we built it in 1962, it was built as an office?
As an office.
The entire building?
Yes, but back then, you know, it was always set up, every one of those buildings are set up with split in half, so that you have the option, you know, to go with what's in the use in the commercial district, so, you know, over the years, some of the other buildings were warehouse, and one time, there was a print shop in there, you know, there were several different things, you know, now, there's, there's offices in the, on the two, on the right side of me, so, you know, but it's always been the store, it's like a store, probably, two doors that you answer.
So, in 62, it was built with these 13 parking spaces for the 1,568 square feet?
Yes.
And was an office at that time?
Yes.
And three or four years ago, somebody started doing some warehousing? And three or four years ago, somebody started doing some warehousing?
Yeah, it was like picking pack, you know, where they send out graduation things.
So they had buses?
Yes, yes.
And it was still an office?
Yes.
Parking didn't change?
No.
So now you are proposing to put this back to an office?
Yes.
The last use of this office would store, would stuff in. Before that, it was office. All the uses we discussed are allowed uses?
Yes.
You have sufficient parking. I note that the parking for an office is one per 250 square feet, so that would be seven parking spaces, they have 13. If it was solely a warehouse, you need one space per thousand, so you would need two parking spaces. So sufficient parking is provided. The use you're proposing is used that existed, and it is one that is allowed?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? You have anything else to add on this?
No, just want to thank you. This is my first time, I had to come before the board. Trying to be low-key.
Thank you.
Bob, do you, uh, thank you, Mr. Whitehead. Bob, before we talk to the board here about this, do you have any other questions that you'd like to bring up or anything that you like, any statements?
I would like to make a brief...
Come on up, so we could get you on the microphone and on camera, because you're so handsome. Can you hold my glasses? I guess I'd like to ask the board a question first. Does everybody have a copy of the ordinance in front of them? Do that? In front of us right now? Yes. Honestly, please, but we got it. Okay, can I speak now? If I may, and I will say this as slow and clear as I possibly can. Are you reading 225-15? No, I'm reading 120-12-2. Article A, six. But I would like to have everyone's attention when I read it, and if you guys can really focus on what I'm going to read. Article six says, "Change from one conforming use to another conforming use, comma, or one office use to another office use, for which there is no other variance required." So I understand, Mr. Whitehead, the history of the building, of warehousing in office, and I got the office, I get that. But the ordinance clearly says one office use to another office use, and that's why we're here today. And that's all I want to say. If I'm interpreting it wrong, please, let's clarify it tonight, so we can help other businesses that want to come to our borough. Thank you. Thank you, Bob. Thank you. Okay, members of the board here, we heard everything, and we'd like to get some feedback of what we're thinking. Yes, Mr. Whitehead, can I?
I think from listening to both testimonies, I think that Mr. Herbert did, in fact, do what he was supposed to do, based on the language of the ordinance. However, I think from what Mr. Whitehead had mentioned and what Mr. O'Brien has confirmed, I don't really think that anything else is needed.
What was the last word?
I said, I think from Mr. Whitehead's testimony and what Mr. O'Brien has confirmed, I don't think we need to do anything else. That's my opinion.
What do you mean by we don't need to do anything?
I don't think he needs a site plan.
Okay. Do we have that power?
Well, I don't know. That's what my opinion is. I think we have the power to modify Mr. O'Brien.
Yes, sir. Maybe could we hear Mr. O'Brien's comments?
Yeah, just raise his hand there, sir. Go ahead. What's up, my brother?
Mr. Herbert, of course, has pointed out the minor site plan ordinance, which would have cars out in other situations, from which, in their final, the sites are not required. However, I think that there's another party ordinance that should probably guide the board in this. And this goes back to an entire zoning permitted section, at which an applicant comes to the administrative officer, the zoning officer, and requests permission to do something. The zoning officer has within their power several courses of action. One of those courses of action is to decide what kind of relief is necessary, and send it to the board, citing minor, major, variance, that type of thing. And that follows the decision of the zoning officer that relief was necessary. But prior to that decision, the zoning officer has the right to find that this could fit an exemption to the site plan ordinance. And right now, I'm looking at Section 120-9.1, Slum Charlie, County law.
120, you mean 225?
120-9.1, statement. And that is part of the zoning permit process. They have to issue, the zoning officer, they have to decide what review this thing is going to take through a process. And as part of that decision, the zoning officer may find that the application is so minor that it is exempt from site plan review. And in this particular case, citing that section, I'll read it if that, please, the board, if this helps. And that states, quote, "All applications which involve a change in tenancy, but not a change in use as herein defined, and or minor alterations to the site, or to one for the road voting elevations, shall not be required to obtain site plan approval." It goes on to say, "The zoning officer shall issue a zoning permit after consultation with the chairperson of the planning board, and after the application has been reviewed by a planner and engineer, to verify and confirm that no variance is required, and that any improvements are applicable, conform to applicable standard." This is actually part of the zoning permit process. And I think that when you take a look at the application that's in front of you, and you read that part about the minor site plan that says that it's eligible for minor, there's no change. And then you jump to this, prior to minor site plan, to the process, and it says, "If there's no change, no alterations, it's an allowed use, it's a allowed use, the zoning officer themselves had the ability to exempt his application from site plan review," meaning that they would just issue a zoning permit. Go ahead, go down.
Well, that's a good point. And I think we have been down this pipe before, where we have not been confused, but we have talked about the difference between a change of tenancy and a change of use. And this is a perfect example, it's a perfect example of just that. And I can understand also some of the confusion in the way things are written and the interpretation is saying. So...
I think there's, sorry, I think there's a little bit of conflict in the two sections of the code. You know, maybe at some point we might, I mean, cleaning up like number six, to say, except in the case of that section where, you know, without, something along those lines. But clearly, I see, you know, there's, oh, what you're reading is supposed to be...
But that doesn't specify, that doesn't specify minor site plan or major site plan. That basically, so they're allowed to do some minor exterior work and still?
Extraordinarily minor.
Okay, well...
Minor alterations to the site.
Kind of like that.
So, it's typical of what this board is working on right now, cleaning up some of this terminology, and I'm happy to hear that we have something in front of us right now that this board has got to make a decision on. And that's going to tell us that we have to kind of read the fine print in our committees to not, and it's going to happen again, but to not be given the word as punchline between, you know, what step do you take next? So if we're supposed, or if Mr. Herbert is supposed to be reading that first, then looking at the ordinance, if I understand you correctly, it could have stopped there.
Yes, sir.
But the key word is a could. Key words are, it could, he could have said...
Mr. Herbert, you're not eligible for this because, for whatever reason, Mr. Whitehead has said this is an allowed use, it has always been an allowed use, and actually in terms of changes, that is, he's the owner. So that has not changed since 1962.
Okay. Anyone else on the board?
So this, I just, so this will not, like, stop Bob or, you know, this interpretation we're going to try, if we say, okay, we're going to go, we're going to go against Bob's opinion on this or whatever, it's not going to set a precedent for, precedent for us for a rest?
No, because every application rises and falls on the particular facts of that application. So somebody could come to us something that may be similar, but it doesn't have the same facts to it.
Okay. And if anything, in Bob's defense, he pretty much went by this.
No, that's exactly, that's, that's why I'm saying that.
Yeah, so it's whether or not this area is so gray that we could look at it with a different pair of eyes. And I don't think that Bob was at fault, or that Whitehead was at fault.
It's a reasonable interpretation.
Yeah, it's a reasonable interpretation. Now, this board has to figure out what they want to do with it. So, can I get started with this? Okay. Did we discuss this enough? Go ahead.
No, no, if somebody else has any other comments. I was just going to say, what is the ruling? Is this a, an overturning versus an upholding situation?
Pretty much. Let me lay something out, maybe you can work off of, work off of that. This is an appeal. Bob said Mr. Whitehead cannot do something, that he needed a minor site plan. He played the cards, he was dealt, he looked at the ordinance, which I said before is a little, little dicey. And Mr. Whitehead said, "I like Bob, but I think I can go ahead, I don't think I need a minor site plan. One conforming use to another conforming use, no variances, no exterior changes." So that's, that's basically the facts, in terms of going back to 62, fine, but it's basically those three issues conforming to conforming, no variances, no exterior changes. If I was, and if you feel that that scenario, although this doesn't, this doesn't make any sense. Because what this says is, if you don't have a variance in minor site plan, but it doesn't address exterior changes. What Kevin said does, but I am not big on having minor, minor alterations to the site, because what's minor to you might not be minor to somebody else, and that leaves a lot of discretion. So I think we need to put this ordinance to the side a little bit. What you're, what you're doing is, you know, the decision is whether to adopt Bob's interpretation. And again, I think from what I heard, Bob is, if Bob is zoning officer, I'm looking for this board to give me some help on this. I'm looking, because if teneties come in tomorrow under Section 6, change from one conforming to another, he's got a rule to say, well, we're going to have more appeals. So it's within our power to say, we think Mr. Whitehead's interpretation is more accurate, and come up with, with a ruling that, you know, as part of that rationale, to guide Bob in the future with similar situations. If someone else comes in, and my view would be, if we have a situation where someone comes in, like Mr. Whitehead says, "I'm going from conforming permitted use to another conforming permitted use, I don't need any variances, and I'm doing nothing to the exterior," to me, I don't see where a minor, where a site plan's needed, minor site plan. And I think if we, if part of this ruling is, Bob, when you have a similar circumstance, and if something changes, if it bumps up parking down the road with somebody else, or if they're going to do a new exterior, then that's different than what we're deciding now. We're deciding a very narrow scope. So I think if the board's comfortable working off of this, saying, under these circumstances and exactly similar circumstances in the future, when you have conforming, no variances, no changes, we don't feel that that justifies Bob in saying, or any zoning officer in saying a minor site plan's needed. That's just me. I mean, that would make sense. And everyone, Mr. Herbert's thumbs are up in the air. When zoning officers, many times, because I've been down this road with many zoning officers, they look for guidance. And Bob is interpreting this, looking at this literally, there would be a need for a minor site plan, but it doesn't make any sense. And if it doesn't make any sense, we shouldn't buy into it. What Kevin said is accurate, but that leaves the door open for different interpretations of minor. We'll be back here with other stuff. So I think what we're doing is focusing on this narrow, this narrow corridor, and if anything in the, this and anything in the future fits in that, Bob has the ability to say, "No minor site plan required."
Okay.
Which is beneficial to the...
Let's just add to that a little bit, Mr. Whitehead. Right now, we, you have expressed on more than one occasion that the, this does not make any sense. It contradicts itself, it's conflicting with what Kevin read. And I think on the back end of this, Mr. Whitehead, as a resident here in Kennewood, is caught in the middle of something like that. And I would also think that this is something that this board has to address immediately, because I don't know if we're going to have teneties in front of us in the next 10 months, but I know another one will come up. And we need to, as a board, get this one going as quickly as possible to get it over to council to say, "We need to change this verbiage and get it going here how we deem it necessary." I do believe that you can, the way Kevin read that other side, that some minor work can be done, which it should be done, but it needs to be clarified.
Minor needs to be defined.
Minor needs to be defined.
Yeah, somewhere.
It's painting, it's not a partition role, it's this, it's that. So clarification to that is important. But I think at this point, this is exactly what this board is looking for, that's why we form these committees, and I think that's our first order of business, to get this off the table. Bob is not caught between a rock and a hard place.
That's right.
And the applicant or the resident is not in that same position. So that's my take on it, board.
I just have one thing to add to that, and I'm in agreement with everything. What Kevin said, which is the beginning of the ordinance, the zoning officer can stop right there without even getting to the definition of a minor site plan.
If they feel it's minor.
Correct, correct. Well, and then, if I recall, and I don't have it in front of me, but it said at the discretion of the zoning officer, did it not?
Give them that.
So, so it is minor at the discretion of the zoning officer. So it's the zoning officer's discretion of what is minor or not.
Is it appropriate? I'm sorry.
The zoning officer's supposed to consult with the chairperson of the planning board. I don't know if I want...
Which he just did right now. This is exactly what he's doing.
Well, I mean, the way this reads, an application comes in, appeal comes in, the zoning officer consults with Rich and Kevin and Christian, and then, I don't like meeting with the chairman of the, of the planning board before it even goes up for a hearing.
Well, I don't think a meeting, I think the question from the zoning officer...
After consultation.
Is a valid question, to see if it needs to go further, but...
I was going to say, Mr. Herbert, is it appropriate to ask the zoning enforcement officer? I'm not sure, Mr. Herbert, first, if he was aware of that section of the, you were or you weren't?
I was.
You was. And yet you decided to bypass it.
Well, on their land use laws, you...
Excuse me, Mr. Herbert, could you come up again? I'm sorry, Chris, we got to get you on that microphone. Anything you say can and will be used.
What else is there?
Zoning's not easy, guys. Well, Mr. O'Brien, I have spoke to him a couple times in the last month with the same facts, and me as the zoning officer took an oath to uphold the municipal land use laws, exactly what you guys are discussing. I didn't go to the chairman, because I feel, in my opinion, that that's a conflict, because once I discuss it with the chairman, and he says to me, "No, Bob, you can't approve it, it's got to go for a minor site plan," then he's going to hear, hear the case. In my opinion, that's a conflict. So that's another thing we need to look at, and I believe in that.
I agree.
I have no problem with the, with the engineering at all, you know? So we need to change this as well.
Right. And I did speak to Tony, I apologize, I forgot Tony's last name, Tom Barber.
Galiano.
Right. And he gave me, he gave, he said, the way the ordinance is written, he felt it did need a minor site plan, and I had to hold it up. He didn't agree with it, the same as I don't agree with it, but it's written, you know. So, we have conflicting things, and being part time, and being the zoning officer, not only enforce the laws, I look out for the applicants, and I look out for landlords that own these buildings, and, you know, we can't slow down economics. So we really need a lot of common sense here, and really go through these rules. I remember way back, when the master plan was adopted, the ordinances, I wasn't the zoning officer at the time, but I had a lot of concerns. And all I want to say to this board is, anytime anything comes in front of you, and you guys have got committees now working on it, you've got to read word to word, page to page. That's the commitment to the community. Don't just take somebody's word that it's okay, because this is what happens when we do this. Somebody didn't read something, because I know all of us are intelligent enough to catch that in that section. That tells me somebody overlooked something, or made another honest mistake. So please take these ordinances.
You did the right thing, I mean, you said it. I'll still kind of go to my line of question, Mr. Herbert, maybe you want to say it. So, putting aside, so what I heard was that you were, you possibly would have used the section of the code that Kevin read, but for the potential conflict created by consulting with the chairman. So, just, yeah, that's like a guess. These conflict too. So then, assuming it's there, and I get that, but if it wasn't there, how would you have decided that a minor site plan was not needed?
Okay, so can I ask you, that detail, you're asking Kevin's section citing that the zoning officer's supposed to read the first part, or the minor site plan?
No, no.
Kevin's part wasn't there?
No, no, I'm saying, Kevin's part is there, but we're taking out the fact that you're supposed to consult with the chairman, which you said, the reason you didn't go that route is because you felt that was a conflict. So take that out of the code, would you have made the determination upfront that this didn't need a minor site plan approval? If you look at that first.
In, in, in the future?
No, this is a hypothetical question, I don't think it's that difficult, I mean.
Well, it's, it's a hypothetical.
Ask me one more time.
Okay. So, you, you had, Kevin laid out how the code was supposed to be approached, starting with the possibility, you make a determination, whether it needs minor site plan or not. You're saying, you didn't make that determination, because it requires you consult with the chairman, right? So I'm saying, that's no longer in the code. What is, what would your ruling have been, starting there, and then possibly going here? You would, you would have just given, would you have just given a permit, or would you have said, I'm sorry, you have to go get a minor site plan?
Once I spoke with the planner, and the engineer, and got their input, and they felt that we could use that exemption code, I would do that, I would have done that with this application.
That's what I'm asking.
Sorry, I would have done that.
Sorry, you're right.
And for the record, chairman was on vacation, was not available. Sorry.
No, I'm glad you did.
Hard man to get a hold of. Man, I've heard a few words.
That's true.
Anything else, we're good?
Yes, we're good.
Yes or no?
I don't know, I'm too late to get it over.
I think we've heard it all. So, first let's talk about this application, all right? So, we have, well, we do have to open this to the public, Mr. Herbert?
Yes.
Public comment?
No, I was going to just answer something, ask you something, that you, I'm going to ask you a question that you asked Mr. Herbert, and I don't know if that was answered correctly, because it is, it is a little confusing. And, Mr. Herbert, you don't have to come back up, I just wanted to understand, did you look at that book first, or did you bypass that and go right to this 125, 225, or the new cadence?
Right, I asked him previously if he was aware that that, what Kevin read was in place, and he had the option to use that, he had answered yes.
Okay, now, okay, a motion to open this portion of the meeting to the public?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Ladati, one favor.
Aye.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, motion to close.
Motion to close the public portion of the meeting.
Motion made by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Pantino, one favor.
Aye.
Okay, let's talk about this. As, as I heard everything here, I do feel quite strongly that, of course, no site plan here in this application is necessary. I would stand by the ordinance that Mr. Kevin, that Kevin recited before this one that is somewhat confusing. I would also enlighten the board that this is the main reason why we have formed the committees, to get some of this confusion out, and I don't think our residents in town should be in the middle of some of the things that are not very clear. I also think that Mr. Herbert did a good job in looking at this, the way he did. I also applaud, what's his name, Mr. Vitale, because, very cordial, very nice, you know, this is what I'm doing, straightforward. So, and it is, for me, I would like to put it out to you, Mr. David.
No, I'll put it out to them.
Put it out to the board, for their interpretation, and what they feel about what I just said, or their thoughts on this matter.
I'd like to make a motion, a comment, and then a motion, if that's okay, Mr. Herbert.
If no one else has a comment after that?
Well, my comment is, whatever motion, or however the vote goes, after that vote is over, I would like to chat as a board real quick, and give our zoning officers some verbal direction of how to handle this in the future, as well. So, with that, if anybody else has any comments?
That is just my concern, we were just mentioning, well, maybe we'll get 20 of these in, or 10, 10 of these in, in the next few weeks or whatever, I'm sure that's just, it's not going to happen, but I don't want to lose our ability to make sure all these sites are checked out to the full by just saying, okay, don't worry about it anymore, Bob.
So here's the best thing I could say, Mr. Ladati, how many have we seen just like this in the past year? Next to none, right?
Exactly.
So I don't think one more is going to happen until the end of the year, hopefully, that we could get it straightened out.
I understand, I just want to.
We do have a pattern, we're done.
And when you guys are done, sort of the same before, is that, again, I think he did the right thing, and with the language in the first section of the minor site plan which we're probably going to revise, and/or the second one with the exemption, Mr. Herbert has the knowledge and the expertise to use his resources of our professional staff, if he needs it, and if he feels that it falls into this very nil improvements where nothing, where an exemption can be used, he does have the resources to use, Mr. O'Brien and Christian, to get further advice.
Absolutely.
So I don't think it'll slip through the cracks, I don't think he's going to go in the lily and say, oh yeah, just like, forget that, but. But I just think at that point, that he has that, in which case we will, or won't see this, so.
Well, remind me, Mr. O'Brien, it read that he makes that determination in consultation with the engineer and the planner. And he doesn't make it on his own.
No.
So, zoning permit comes in, and he confirms.
About what this should read.
And that's only, that caveat is only for an exemption. So he's at the point, like in this particular case, he had the choice of writing the letter, it's a site plan, doesn't need a site plan, we'd never say it. But if he wanted to go for an exemption, then that piece of land would come up.
You're right, yeah.
So I also just want to add one thing with that as well, I also believe 100% that the zoning officer should never have any conversation with the chair at any given time pertaining to anything like this, it should go to the professionals, and that's something that we absolutely need to take away from that, because that's just too messy, too messy at all. So, I would like to see that happen.
Yeah, I just want to.
Okay. No matter who the chair is.
Exactly.
Okay, so with that being said, anyone else?
Could I, I'm reading this, this, the exemption that you mentioned, Kevin, and this talks about a change in tendency, but not a change in use. Now, if you have, you could have two uses that are permitted in a zone, let's say you're going from commercial to retail, and they're both permitted, or you're going from Joe Smith to Mary Smith with the same tendency, and the same use. The way this reads, if there's a change in use, that exemption may not apply.
I suspect.
If it's a warehouse to an office, maybe this doesn't apply, and then Bob is stuck again. That's why this needs to be tightened up.
I think we already determined.
But not a change in approved use.
Sir? Anyone else?
Everyone's got, I'll just, sorry. I just look at this as, yeah, it depends on how you will get it, it could be a minor alteration, or it could be a minor site plan, or minor change. To me, the difference is whether or not it's going to be an impact. We're changing the warehouse office, is this going to be, you know, is it going to be 10 people in that home, is it going to be, or not? You know, is it going to be significant enough of a change where it's going to impact the community, and the area, even though the variances are met and all that stuff? That's kind of the dividing line for me. Like, look at this situation, I say, I don't see any difference, and nothing, nothing's going to change here. And, you know, but sometimes, we're too nice about that, we do things, and we do minor alterations, and it becomes, something small becomes something big and out of control, because we've allowed it.
Exactly.
So we have to be careful about that. And I hate, I'm sorry that Mr. Vitale had to come up here, but, you know, sometimes you have to be careful that these people do take advantage of that, so. That's the fine line that we have to figure out how to walk, so, that's it, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? You want to say something, Mr.?
Yes. After listening to the testimony, I'd like to applaud our zoning officer for his diligence. However, I would like to make a motion to overturn his ruling, and allow the applicant to proceed without a minor site plan.
I'll second it.
Okay, the motion made by Mr. Shelkey, seconded by Mr. Ramaldi, one favor, please.
Mr. Cernah?
What's my, did you say?
No, I'm good.
Was there something wrong? Okay.
Mr. Cernah?
Yes.
Mr. Shelkey?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Ramaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Pantino?
Yes.
Mr. Ladati?
Yes.
Mr. Correll?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
And Mr. Chalmers?
Yes. Very good. Good job, Bob. Thank you, Mr. Vitale. Thank you, yes.
So the motion will instruct the zoning officer to issue a zoning permit, allowing a change in tendency to.
That's correct. Did you get that, Bob? You good, Bob?
Yeah, Mr. Vitale, you have to, you're not going to charge the fee, but you have to resume your application.
All right, Bob can take care of that. All right, moving forward, comments for the good of the board? What comments? I don't think you're part of the good of the board yet. So, I do have, I do have one comment. I have not been here for a few weeks on vacation, but in my absence, I just want to recognize one of, one of the great guys that served up here for all of us, John Benenati, who's no longer with us, and I just think he, he was a great member up here, he was a great chairperson, he did everything, and I just want to let everybody know that that's a great loss for our town and our borough, so that's all I have to say.
I feel the same way. He did a lot to tutor us along the way, only, first of all, some of us, when we first came around.
He was just a bit of a mentor to me early on, he was a class act. For those of us who actually sat on the board with his father, he's his father's son. Both were class acts.
We want to applaud him for helping me along the way in my early days, and even when I asked him a question, he says, oh, you just did it like this, and he did it himself anyway. And that's Mr. Benenati, so, I know he's in a better place, and that's what I had. So, at this portion, we need to have a motion for opening the meeting to.
Yes, I will make a motion that we open the meeting to the public.
Motion made, understood. David, seconded by Mr. Shelkey, one favor.
Aye.
Okay, anyone out there, Mr. Herbert?
First of all, you stole my thunder about Mr. Benenati, I'm going to mention that. The most important, I heard April 11th, the next appeal case, and I'm sorry, guys, if I already have a prepaid vacation, and I'm going to be a bad guy and go on vacation, that I'll be gone, I won't be here.
Okay.
So I just want you to know that.
Okay. We'll do the best we can, will you?
Before we work, I think Mr. O'Brien will read answers to every concerning question that's on the curve of that. I think you guys will be okay with that.
We're going to do the best we can.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to close, anyone else? Seeing none, motion.
I will make a motion to close the public portion of the meeting.
Motion made by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Ladati, one favor.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Whoa, 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 I don't see number 10 and a half, I think.
10 and a half. I think we should, as a board, give Mr. Herbert some direction based on what the action we just took, until we get this cleaned up, because this could take months to, to clean up and get passed, as far as how he interprets this, this ordinance.
I would like to say that I think the board spoke on both sides of that, Mr. Perry, with care and concerns of things that could go, things could be let go, and create other problems if they're not looked into. I also agree with the chairman's, Perry pointed out a second of it, saying that it can't be brought to him. So just, so if anything, the only direction to Mr. Herbert would be, until we clean this up, consult with professionals, and go with the best advice at that point.
I would second that, and I think we should direct Mr. Herbert to say that.
Absolutely. I think it clearly says it, and I think that's the legal mode you should be taking, right? It already says it. So, so Bob, I think what Mr. Shelkey's saying is that please follow that format first, go there, and then do the best you can with what you've got.
And may I, Mr. Chairman?
You may.
To all board members and the professionals, as long as I'm the zoning officer in the heart of Kenilworth and any other town, I can assure you guys, when I'm in doubt of something, a site, or what's going on there, before I make my decision, personally, I'll visit the site. And I want, I let you guys know that, and I assure you, I will continue to do that. And when in doubt, I think Mr. O'Brien, in the last year, testified, I have reached out several times, with my concerns of what we should go, is that correct, Mr. O'Brien? We've had an open communication?
We certainly have, we've done very well for the board.
And we're working well, we got it, and I will continue to pack that. So if anybody has any doubt or concern, if you major change, somebody takes a fan, some part in circulation, or older party, you know, they're viewed by, I'm not, I don't take anything for granted.
Okay, I appreciate it, Bob. I just do now, it just raises another question, earlier we said that we were, are we going back into a work session, or no?
I think we've addressed it.
We addressed everything, okay. So, are we all done? Okay, motion to adjourn, someone?
Motion.
Motion was made by Mr. Shelkey, seconded by everyone. Great job, guys.